Y'all be quiet.
Hello, thank you again for coming to join us for another Mind Your Business. Today, we have a friend of mine and a city councilwoman. Her name is Anitra Davis. She's a lifelong resident of Muncie. She's been married for over 22 years to her husband Edmund Davis Senior. They have a blended family of adult children and their last is 26 years old. She has been the employee of the Deputy Trustee for the City Township Office for over 20 years. She started in city government January 1st, 2020, and she began her four-year term as the elected Muncie City Councilperson for District 6. District 6 covers the area neighborhoods of Morningside, Whitley, East Jackson, East Central Neighborhood, a portion of Burlington and Blaine, Southeast Area Industry and South Central Neighborhoods. She's elected to precinct committee person of number 19. She serves on the Community Engagement Committee for South Central Industry Neighborhoods. She serves as an Industry Neighborhoods Public Relations Coordinator, a member of Mobilizing Muncie, a group community of leaders focused on actionable plans to disrupt systematic racism and address racial injustice. She's a board member for Urban Light CDC, Community Develop Corp., which focuses on housing revitalization, the lighthouse recovery home, and neighborhood engagement. She's a member of Muncie Delaware County Black Chamber of Commerce and an organizer of the annual Muncie Juneteenth Celebration along with amazing committee and volunteers. She loves her city and wants to do anything that she can to help move Muncie forward in a positive, productive manner while also believing that the voice should never be unheard. So today, we thank you and we welcome Ms. Anitra Davis to our broadcast.
Hey.
Hello. How are you?
I am well. I'm excited to be here. Let me start by saying I am proud of you, Tameek, and everything that you're doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you so, so much. I just, you know, when God puts something on your heart, you just gotta do what he tell you to do and go where he leads you. So, thank you for supporting this platform and for coming on and talking to our fine citizens of Muncie, Indiana, because I know that you are a voice of the people as a friend and a neighbor and just someone that I know cares about community. I know that you will help people when they need it and tell them what they need to hear and ask the tough questions. So, while you're on the show today, just take the time and let us know what it is that you would like us to know as the citizens of Muncie and to get ready to vote for this election season.
Well, first, I want to talk about the census real quick because it is to a close. The census is October 5th is the deadline for the census. And some just quick little things that people maybe forget. The census is about numbers. It's about the number in your population. It has to do with dollars coming into your community. And it's about businesses. You know, businesses utilize the census data and determine whether they're gonna come and bring a business. So, you know, I hear a lot of people say, you know, we need more businesses on, you know, the certain sides of town, South Utter Town, for instance. And, you know, if we're filling out the census, we're not being hopeless. We're not letting them know that we have all these residents here that can utilize your business. So that's why the census is very important. You know, the census, $2,700 per person. So if we have a thousand people in the city that decide that they're just not gonna fill out the census, we're losing $2.7 million in the city. That's a lot of money. That's money that's gonna go towards, you know, things that we want to accomplish, you know, whether it be, you know, programs, whatever it may be. That's $2.7 million that we have to consider are gonna be lost. So please, please, please fill out the census. It is confidential and it has to do with numbers, numbers. So please fill out the census. So that's the first thing. Have you filled out your census?
I have. I filled my census out as soon as it came. We got that together. So it's been a couple of months. I thought it was already the deadline had passed. But I'm glad that you brought that up because when Sue here on the show the other day, she spoke about the census as well. And she spoke about a lot of times people don't want to answer it because of different situations. And one of those situations is they may be undocumented. And so she tried to stress the point that it does not matter if you're documented or undocumented. Again, it is about numbers. But oftentimes, people still feel that it doesn't concern them. It has nothing to do with them. It doesn't affect them. They're not gonna benefit from it. And why should they waste their time or what should they do? Help them to understand, you know, you talked about the numbers. You talked about the money, the businesses coming. But help them to understand just how easy and simple it is to just do it and get it done.
Yeah. Well, just go to the website. The website is 2020census.gov. And get on there and just put, enter your information. It's really simple. Anybody can do it. If you need help, you know, I can give you a number where a census worker can help you. I think at this point, they're going door to door for areas that have a low percentage rate of filling out the census. So we appreciate them. I hope that they are safe. You know, that's a job. I think my neighbor, he's elderly, he's about 80. He's out there working the census and I'm proud of him. So, you know, just listen to what they have to say. They can give you quick critiques on how to do it really quickly. So just get it done. 2020census.gov is the website.
All right. All right, good. So, thank you again for sharing that information. It is vital and it's crucial, especially for people in all areas and with children and with elderly. It's very crucial because those programs can be, you know, a life-saving thing. So, thank you again for that. So, I'm gonna give you the opportunity while you're here to just talk about the importance of voting, talking about, talk about the things that Muncie wants to accomplish and some of the things that people may not know or understand. Help them to understand a little bit more about how their vote counts and what it means to make a difference as a citizen in our great city.
Right. Well, you know, I am currently a member on the city council and I could not be there if it wasn't for voting. I mean, as simple as it's put. If you don't go out and vote for people that you want in office, they're not gonna get there. If you don't see a candidate that, you know, kinda goes along for someone else. But vote. We have to vote. We do. It makes a difference. Voting is your voice. You know, we sometimes feel like, you know, part of my bio that I try to be the voice of the unheard. But if you're not talking to me and you're not voting and I don't know what you want, how can I be your voice? You know, I'm willing to do that for you, but you have to, you have to get out and vote. You know, and that's with everything. Voting is, is your voice. It is, is how you are heard. People hear you loud and clear. And I have said this from the beginning. And when you vote, those numbers count. Politicians care about the areas where they see votes turn out because you can make them or break them. So that's why it's your voice. Because if you have a whole group or an area that just, they don't get out and vote, sometimes politicians will overlook them, not saying that it's right, but it's true. That is just the truth. Look at it in that light. You know, the more people that get on the board, the more accountability are held to these elected officials. You have to support every part of the city. And if, you know, if we're not getting out to, sometimes people overlook you because they feel like it doesn't matter. They're not gonna make me a brain. So if I don't do something for them, what does it matter? So to show them, show them, you know, beat them at the ballot box. That's what we say. Beat them at the ballot box. That is your voice. Tell them you vote or our needs will be met. And if not, we will vote you out. Because that's what your right is. That's what you should do. So, you know, voting, vote, vote. I don't care who you vote for, you know, go vote. It makes a difference. We need you to vote. So, that's simply put, but...
That, that is great that you say that because it made a lot of sense when I, when I think about people that say voting's not important or it doesn't affect them. When I think of low-income districts and maybe that's where they think a lot of times people don't vote in those districts. And maybe that's why those districts are overlooked and maybe that's why they are in those positions. Could that be what is affecting those districts by them not going out and voting? And if they did come out and vote, that could make an impact and change some things.
I was on another Zoom meeting and we were discussing, we were pushed to the polls a bit. And it was, you know, and she, she, she's actually a Ball State student, a Ball State graduate. And she put it so eloquently. I cannot give you her exact words, but she said, you know, voting is power. It is your power. It is your power. You know, power runs things, unfortunately. It is, you know, and voting is your power. So when you, that's like, you know, when, when you have a whole collective of people who have made a decision that we need these things done. We need opportunities. We need things addressed. When you have power in numbers, you have power in numbers. And you're, you think those politicians are not looking at the numbers across the city, across the state? Yes, they are. Look at where they campaigned. Watch how the, watch the areas they go into campaign. There are people that won't even come to the South Side of Muncie to campaign or consider us because they just don't vote. And it's not gonna affect them. So they cater towards those that vote. It's not right. I do, I, I'm gonna continue to say that it's not right, but it's facts. And if you really want power, your power is your vote and your voice. And you have to, that makes them be held accountable. It does. So, and I'm not gonna say that's the reason. There's, there are many reasons why we can't get some things done. Census, for one, I'm gonna go back to that because that's 10 years worth of information. That's 10 years worth of money. So whatever, whatever that is, this is, affects 10 years of our lives. 10 years that we may go without $2.7 million if a thousand people don't fill it out. 10 years that we may go without the needs of our areas because we didn't fill the census out. You know, so voting, filling out the census, these things are important. And then, and then look at it in simpler terms. If you don't vote, how, how do you, these people are making policies and changes about your, because they do. It affects people. They determine what's, what's legal, what's not legal, what's, you know, how do you, they separate the cities, the portions of the district thing, you know? They can divide communities up to where one person can have more power and have more votes. It is important that you vote. You vote. You vote in the people that have your best interest at heart. And that's what you have to do. But you have to vote or you have no voice.
And you know, I clearly understand that. And you said you vote in the people that you, that you know are gonna do something or that you believe are gonna do something. But what if there are none of those people there? How do you get people that want to change? Because most of the time, people don't want to get involved. So, how do you get someone that could make a difference other than the same people sometimes that keep coming through? Nobody else is gonna stand up. So those people are automatically gonna be put in there. There's sometimes not even a candidate to run against someone. And so they keep sliding through and nothing changes. But people get upset because of nothing changes. But there's not those quality people that are out there to vote for.
But in the sad part of it is that we have so many quality people that could be doing these jobs. It could be these elected officials. It could be making decisions for us. I hear them talking all the time. When I go places, they tell me all things that I should be doing and how things should be done. And I think to myself, I sometimes say to them, you should run for office. You should. We need you. We need you in a position where you can change policies and, and determine what's best for, you know, certain areas. Because you have some good ideas. Volunteer. Go to these meetings. People, you know, going to meetings are important. When things are going on across the city, go to the meetings. Find out what's going on and air your, your concerns. Voice your opinion and give your ideas. You know, the squeaky wheel always gets the oil. So, attending, run for office. There is, run for office. I'm telling you, you know. Not, you know, I don't wanna just talk about myself, but I'm just using myself as an example. You know, when I ran in 2016, it was a tough race. It was a county race. You know, I had naysayers to say, you know, you're not gonna win. Why would you do that? You know, this system is for certain people. It's not for everybody, you know. But why? Why, why shouldn't we? We should. We should get out there. We put ourselves out there and try. You never know what you can change. Even if it's a snippet of something that you changed, if something will be changed, it'll be different than it was before, you know? So, I would say people need to go to meetings. They need to get involved and they need to run for office. Run for office, please. I wish, I wish more people would run for office. It's important. Um, I lost track a little bit, but yes, in 2016, I lost. And some people were right. I didn't win, but I gained so much knowledge. I gained so many friends. I get to let people know that I'm here for the people, not about politics. You know, it's, it's about the people. I wake up every day, and this is the guy's honest truth. Every day I get up and I say, today is gonna be a good day, Anitra. It's your job to make it a good day. It is. And I am gonna make it a good day. I got two, two things to do. To live my life today, help somebody. Those are my goals every day. Every single day that I wake up, I have two goals. Live my best life that day and to help somebody. That's it. Is that simple for me? It is. Whatever, how, whatever it is, as long as I met those two goals that day, and believe me, I'm gonna live my best life. That's one thing I'm always gonna be happy. I'm gonna live my best life. But my second one is to make sure I help someone do something, even if it's minimal. So, you know, and, and we all need to have, have something, you know? Wake up with some kind of energy, some kind of goal because it's rough out here. I think about mental illness and mental health and, you know, it's stressful. We live in a stressful time. You know, it, it makes me feel good to know that I'm trying to help in some kind of way. Do everything you can for this. And I mean, I'm not happy about it, but am I working to work in things? Absolutely I am. So that makes me feel good. I don't know what makes other, whatever it is that makes you feel good, get up and do that. Do that because we need it. We do. I'm off topic, but...
No, you're fine. That, that's, that's beautiful because I wanted to say that you said, people have great ideals and people can make a difference, but those are not the people that are stepping up to the plate. And a lot of times, what I've found is people will say, oh, well, it's not for me or I could never do that. And I'm like, but you wanna change. You wanna do something, but why not? Why is it so hard for people to step out of their comfort zone? Because I feel like we're here to serve and we all have a purpose. And so whatever it is that you are designed to do, that ability is gonna shine through. And sometimes we don't even know that we have those capabilities within us. But sometimes they look at the politicians and they look at the dirty politics that's been played. They look at the, the craziness that goes on, the slandering and all of that. And then they don't want to be a part of it. But the thing is, if we have those type of people that came in, it would change that. So how do you encourage those people to understand that, you know, we need solid people like yourself? Because Sue said when she was running, well, not, she wasn't running. She was going out asking people if they would run. She was trying to get people to run for city council or whatever, and nobody wanted to do it. And so finally, a friend said, why don't you do it? And so that's how she became involved. And so we need more people to understand what you are actually asking others to go do. Maybe you should try to do what yours, because if you have those ideals and you know what it is that you want, you need to do that. So how can you encourage those people to give it a chance?
Um, don't be afraid. Don't be afraid. A lot of people fear that, you know, well, I'm gonna speak for myself. My biggest fear was that people put somebody that didn't fit in or somebody that, you know, she doesn't come from a political background. A lot of people, somebody and their fan ran for office or they have, they run in a closeness circle of people who are politicians and they know them. I did not have that at all. I think what happened with me was I got hired a long time ago at my job and it was, it was sort of not supposed to be, but a political office because, you know, it was an elected official that was my boss. Thank goodness that, you know, it was a Republican that hired me. And he was trying to make our office diverse, I, I think was his goal. And I respect him for that. You know, he was trying to give jobs to people other that, that looked different than he did and, you know, to make the makeup of the office. So, you know, whatever the reason was, but it turned really well. You know, the Lord of Death, you know what I'm saying? He put that on his heart to do that, you know? And everybody doesn't feel the same way, you know? And I, I get it, you know? I hear people say all the time, you know, um, you know, you shouldn't hire people because of the color of their skin. I'm not saying that you should, but you should take an opportunity to look at those people and decide that, you know, I need a diverse office. Everybody has an opinion about something and something to bring to the table, you know? So, beyond that, I started in politics because of that. But, and then I noticed that people weren't voting like they should. And so it was like, what can I do to help people to vote? Well, first, I need to learn more about voting. And I did. I just went on the state website and learned more about voting. And I was like, oh, you know, there's precinct commitment. What is a precinct commitment? Because I had no clue what a precinct commitment was. And well, lo and behold, a precinct commitment is a person I can run for office for in my area. So I filled out the form and ran for precinct commitment. And what a precinct commitment does is basically try to get people out to vote. Tell them about, you know, how to vote, you know? Encourage, you know, them to show up for the forum, engage with the candidates that are running and just do whatever I can to help make the voting process easier for them or to help them. And the sick and shut-in, to help the people that are sick and shut-in vote. They need to vote as well. Whatever it is that you choose to do, whatever reason you decide to get into politics, if you're interested, just jump right in. Don't be afraid. Do not be afraid. You can, as you go. You know, it's the same with, I use church, church as an example. I hear people saying, you know, I gotta get myself together before I go to church. No, you don't. Just go. Go if that's what you wanna do. You know, they take you as you are. You know what? Politics takes you as you are as well. You're not gonna do everything perfectly. I don't do everything. You know what? I'm accepting every bit of it. It is what it is, you know? So, you know, and, and either they're gonna accept you as you are or they're not. You know, those are not, they don't accept you as you are. But you know what? There's a group of people that are, and they're gonna respect you and they know your heart is gonna shine if you're in for the right reasons. It is. So, just get out there and do it. Oh, oh, I can't hear you at all.
No, that's okay. I had to mute, I had to mute for a minute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you know, I really love the points that you're making. You can just see the enthusiasm and the fire and the freshness within you. And that is the thing, because sometimes when people have done things for so long, it just becomes routine. But how easy is it or hard to campaign and to raise the money and to get a team of, of people put together that are helping you to, to, to do what you need to do to get out there to get the votes?
Uh, I'm not gonna be, uh, it's not easy. Let me start with that. You, to make up in your mind, you have, you start with your friends and family. Those people that are dedicated to your cause. The closest people to you, whether it be your children, your spouse, your family. And you start with them. You present it and you tell them what you're trying to do. And then you ask them, you beg them to get on board with you. And if they believe in you, they'll get on board. They'll do, help you do everything you can. It's, it's challenging. It really is. Um, you, you need a good team of people that are willing to do whatever to help you get elected. Uh, because you cannot, you cannot by yourself. No one can get elected by themselves. It's just not possible. It's just not. You only one person. You can't be there, do everything by yourself. So you have to get you a good team together, a good dependable team. People that really want to help you because, and it makes all the difference. And somehow, you will create a campaign with those people and it will just come together. Just step out there on faith, get you some dependable people and just do it.
Um, one more question that I wanna ask and then you are free to just talk about whatever you like. But with the different parties that we have, and sometimes the parties are even divided, what can we do to be more inclusive with the parties working more together and to be more valuable to one another to reach the same common goal?
Well, you know, it is so individual. You know, when I say that, I mean that it just depends on the person. So, I have friends from other parties and we only have conversations about, you know, we don't talk about politics. You know, um, maybe you start there. Don't talk about anything that you don't agree about. Find something that you do have a common ground about, you know? And, and start there because the more, I'm only nine into my position as an elected official and I can honestly say that the city council makeup is more Republicans than are Democrats. But I like them. I think that, you know, I like the way we discuss things. I like the cordialness of each other, courtesy, respect for one another. It's not about Republican or Democrat. It's about doing the greater good for the city, what is right for the city. And if we can just do that, then you, you've crossed the line. You can deal with Republicans or even, you know, nobody's perfect. You know, I don't think one party is better than the other. I don't think one party is gonna get more done than the other. I think it takes individuals. It's individual people. You know, if you have bad people, you have them in both, both parties. I mean, nobody's superior. Nobody's better. Nobody's gonna do a better job. Because at the end of the day, there's not one person on council that can do everything by themselves. It takes us all. You need us all to make things happen, at least the majority. So, you know, as long as you keep that in the mind, you know, I think you can work with across any line, whether it be race, age, political parties. And it's about respect. Respect people. Where, where are we in that? When did that stop? When did we stop respecting each other? When did it become okay for us to be disrespectful towards one another? That's just human decency. I mean, you know, I just, I'm, I'm appalled at some of the things people say to one another. I'm like, you said that? Why? I mean, you know, why are we intentionally hurtful to one another? It's just not necessary. Let's just get things done that need to get done, you know? So, you can work with anyone if you choose, but take them as an individual, not, not, not by party or anything. Does that make sense?
It makes a lot of sense. And I said that was my last question, but you touched on something. So I wanna just ask this real quick. How diverse is our city council?
Um, there are two diverse as far as gender or race or...
All the way around, all the way just rounded.
Okay. So there's nine members of council, and there are two people of color. Um, and there is one woman. I'm the only woman on council. So uh but it it hasn't, you know, it hasn't affected anything thus far. You know, we 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 get along well. Like I said, you know, I have nothing to say bad about anybody on council. Um, anytime that they've called me, we've talked. Anytime I've called them, we've talked, and it and it's been cordial. We, you know, we we are about the city's business, nothing more. We're about the city's business. And I think we get along well. I hope to say the same thing.
Good. Okay, well, you heard it here from Anitra Davis, our district six um city councilwoman lady person. Um, Anitra, is there any final things that you'd like to say, anything else that you would like for the great city of Muncie to know about the city council, about you, or anything else that they can do?
Okay, I will. One thing to go back around voting, um, early voting begins October sixth. Tuesday, October sixth, early voting begins. So that means you can go to the Delaware County Building and you can pass or vote early. Um, you know, that also considered labeled as absentee ballot voting because it's early. Early voting is absentee ballot as well. So you can early vote beginning October October sixth. The hours will be from eight thirty to four, Monday through Friday. Eight thirty to four, Monday through Friday, beginning October sixth for early voting. They will have additional weekend hours towards the end of October. Um, and that those will be October twenty fourth and thirty first. But I have a flyer I can send to you. Maybe you wanna put on your website. I can send it to you, no problem. But um, yes, I just wanna make sure that people know Earl, they can vote early beca- beginning October sixth. Um, I do wanna announce that each neighborhood is um working with BSU Planning. Yay. Um, Professor Jeter and her students are trying to help industry. Uh, help trying to help us beautify industry. So we are, we have a meeting tonight. Um, BSU has a an area at the Muncie Mall where the dress barn barn used to be. And that's where we're meeting tonight at at six. And we are gonna try to do some things to beautify industry neighborhood. If you're interested in coming, please come. If you know somebody lives in industry, tell them. Um, we're trying to get flyers out. We put some things on Facebook that, you know, beautification is a wonderful thing. I want to make sure that people know that it's safe here. It's safe in industry. You know, we 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 have had some challenges. But you know, those things are being addressed. But we are a community of families. We are a part of this city. Um, my biggest saddest part of living over here is that we are in that red line district. From years ago, where they drew a line that said, you know, Madison is gonna be the divider. And that is that area, and our area is over here. I wanna break that red line. I want that. I want the city to know that we are here. We have things to get done in our community, and we we are a part of the city. And we're gonna get rid of that red line. We're gonna erase it. Um, I'm gonna do everything in my power in the next four years to make sure that line is erased and gone forever. Because we deserve that. So if you wanna help, come help beautify industry, please come to the meeting tonight. So I got that. Also, for industry neighbors, I'm also with all these things are coming out of my community engagement committee. So Adopt a Lot program. So we have all these vacant lots and um that are owned by random people, as I have researched. Who these owners of these properties are, I went trying to demand that they would be held accountable for these because it's ridiculous. And I found I got some bad news, but um that a lot of people that own some of these lots live out of state. And it's hard to get a hold of them, and they're just not doing anything. So in the meantime, what do we do? We begin an Adopt a Lot program. And what that is, is that we have found some dollars and the mayors agreed to um help us with some dollars beginning next year. Um, to where a neighbor or a youth or somebody in our community, you decide to adopt a lot, have a lot. You can be paid to do so. So if you're interested in an adopt the Adopt a Lot program, mowing program, cuz we want to keep industry beautiful. Um, we please give us a call, reach out to me, and I'll get you connected on how you can do the Adopt a Lot program. We are trying to pay people to keep our area looking nice. Um, so yes, that's more information about that. What else do I have? That's basically it. I think that's all I have.
Okay, that's awesome. So Anitra, you have been doing a really great job. I see you out there. And I see that you really are wanting to make a difference, and you're talking to the people and educating them. And I think that's one of the most important things is education is because, you know, it says those without um knowledge. You know, so we've gotta have some knowledge. And so thank you for educating our people. And so um I wanna find out from you right now if there is a future in politics. Do you see yourself going beyond the city council? Or is this the level that you see yourself at right now, where you can be grassroots and with the local? Or do you feel like you maybe could see yourself going further one day?
I I don't know. I I I really, I think I just don't know at this point. I wish I could say yes. I I don't know. I I really didn't get in this to be an elected official. I got into this just to help people. And it's tough. It it can be challenging. People don't understand all the work that goes behind um trying to do things right. And there's a lot involved in it. But I think if I can continue my knowledge. Because I'm I'm into work-life balance. There has to be a balance. Um, I love my husband. I love spending time with him, and and I gotta have a balance, you know, where, you know, cuz I'm constantly busy. I really am. And then people don't see it. I I think that's the most difficult part of my job is to hear somebody say, oh, well, she's not doing anything. And it's because they don't see it, and maybe I don't say it enough. But if you in the meetings I go to fighting for things for us, for for people, they would they would sing a different tune. But um, you know, I stay encouraged no matter what. And I don't I don't know if politics is gonna be, I don't think I wanna be a career politician. Um, I just wanna be able to be in a place where I know what's going on and I can help people. Now, so I don't know. We'll see what the future hers is. God's plan, not mine. So we'll see.
All right. Well, I do know that one of your friends, Ari Hurwitz, is gonna be here later on tonight at eight P M. And so we'll get to talk to him, and I thank you for, yeah, he's gonna be on at eight o'clock tonight. So I am I'm thankful for being able to have connections and be able to network. So that way we can be able to reach out to others. But also Ryan, your other friend, he's gonna be here at six tonight. So that ought to be interesting to hear both sides of what they have to say. And I think it's good to be able to hear both sides of the conversation. And then that way, people can decide for themselves, and they can they can hear the issues, and they can hear what people need to say. And so I appreciate the fact that I can stay neutral and stay back and let people have this platform. The reason why I created it, so that everybody can have a voice. Everybody can be heard and everybody can state their claim. So for you being the voice of the unheard, I thank you for speaking out for the unheard today. And I commend you on what you're doing. I congratulate you, and I wish you much success in all that you do. And I pray that whatever it is that you put your mind to, that you will be able to make it through it. So with that being said, I will let you go, but don't leave. Just hang on for a second. Um, to everyone else out there that has been watching live, we thank you for supporting Mind Your Business. Mind Your Business is about doing just that, minding your business. And it doesn't mean to to not be another anybody else's business. But it means whatever it takes to make a difference, whatever it takes to make you better, to make someone else better, to be the servant that we are called to do. Mind your business, cuz at twelve years old, Jesus told his mother, I have to be about my father's business. So be about your business, mind your business, and get out there, vote, turn in your senses, make a difference. Do something. Go become an official so that you can change some things. Because every one of us have a purpose, and we can do something that can make a difference. So until six P M. tonight, come back and see us where um Ryan Webb will be on. And then at eight P M. tonight, Ari Hurwitz will be on. So I'm looking forward to those conversations, and I'm looking forward to you joining me back then. Thank you so much. And remember, as always, you were created with a purpose. God bless.